Call the meeting in order, real call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Salaya.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montano.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Walbridge. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Charles. We're going into the, yeah, this is the work session.
Yes, sir. Work session, item three, work session regarding changes to the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances, Adaptive Reuse and Sign Code. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mark.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and Council. This is part two of the work sessions we've been having on these two particular items. At the last work session, I spent a lot of time kind of walking through this pretty slowly and discussing these two items in detail and then received some of your direction. And also part of your direction was to bring it back again, let's have another work session, but let's make sure we make the effort to invite the public and the commission members to participate more actively in this particular work session. So as you can see tonight, on one side of the room, we have members of the Historic District Advisory Commission, on the other side of the room, we have some members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we may have some other folks that join us. We of course have Peter behind me with the IDA, and I know there's some folks that are potential, not potential, but council candidates that are in the audience as well. So I suspect that we have some folks here tonight that would like to chime in on these. And that's really the purpose of what we want to do tonight, is I'll give a brief introduction again to these items, but we really want to get the input from these folks. And then with that direction, then Mayor and Council will go through the process of going back to the commissions to get favorable, hopefully favorable recommendations and bring these items back to you for adoption, and then we'll go to the implementation stage. So the first item that we have tonight is regarding the adaptive reuse program. And as we described at the last work session in your packets, this would be adopted under the purview of the infill incentive district. So it applies generally to the area that we call the town core, which includes a historic district of course, and it's defined in the map that you see in front of you, or looking at an aerial perspective, you can see pretty much it's all the developed area west of 79 to the Gila River, to 87, and to where development ceases to occur on the west side of town. And actually, we've narrowed where the code would apply to within this area even, to make sure it focuses on the developed portions of the infill incentive district. So we would suggest that it didn't apply to territory square, for instance, and let that have its own incentive mechanisms. The things that we'd like to touch on in the adaptive reuse program would be the use of the building codes, specifically the use of the existing building code provisions to help accommodate some of the buildings that are older, that haven't been occupied for a while, that haven't been in use for a while, maybe they have a change of occupancy, and under the regular codes, the 2006 international codes, they would have to make substantial changes to bring those buildings into compliance or ready for occupancy. Existing building code would allow some leeway on that. Now, we have adopted the existing building code already, but this would take it an extra step to make it even more accommodating. And that would deal with issues like change of occupancy. And as I heard from you at the last meeting, there also, we could address on some of the issues related to life safety and fire safety, but I think that I got direction at the last meeting that in this policy, we want to make sure that we don't do anything to compromise really this, not only the safety of the building that you're working on, but in the downtown area, your neighboring property, especially when you have buildings such as the vice mayor has worked on, where you have, you do this work on your building, but right next to you, maybe even on both sides of you, you have a building coming up to you, and you have a shared wall or two walls next to each other. So we want to make sure that we're not doing anything that would compromise the safety of those buildings. And I think I heard at the last work session, there would be concerns about modifications to codes relating to the electrical, the electric code, and maybe even fire code issues. We also talked about how there would be concern about higher occupancy or higher occupancy type of uses, such as an assembly use. So taking a building now that has a lower occupant load and increasing it, doubling, tripling or more its occupancy load, we want to make sure that we're not compromising the ability of folks to get out of the building. So we want to continue to look at ingress and egress requirements. But what I did hear from you at the last meeting was that we could look at, we could look at things such as the plumbing, the plumbing facilities. There are some opportunities to provide some items, code items related to plumbing, such as the number of bathrooms or kitchen facilities and things like that, to kind of loosen some of those requirements a little. Still meeting the intent of the code and the need of the facility, but one of the ideas we looked at on bathrooms is to have perhaps a unisex bathroom, or perhaps if we have public bathrooms set within a certain distance of a series of shops, that we could rely on that particular facility as meeting the needs of the bathroom, meeting the bathroom needs. Example I gave at the last meeting, for the benefit of those here tonight, was in a food court. You can see where there's 10 or 15 restaurants, but obviously, they don't all have a bathroom. They have a common bathroom that's serving all of them. So also wanted to look at accessibility, the plan review and permit fee categories, impact fees, property lines, parking, paving, landscaping, and touching on those particular items. In the plan review, permit and impact fees, what we looked at is the opportunity to potentially lower, lower the fees for doing development within the subject area that we would cover under this, under this policy. And the idea that was put forth is to lower the amount of the project valuation, and that in turn would lower the amount of your permit fee and your plan review fee. There would even be the caveat on top of that, if your project has a certain value not to exceed specified amount, that we would then not charge a fee in that category. So if you're doing a smaller project, you potentially would not have a plan review fee or a permit fee or a very minimal one, and even on the larger projects, your fee would be reduced because we would modify the valuation criteria. On the development impact fees, Mayor and Council, that is something that we definitely would look for a direction from everyone here tonight. We do have the opportunity, because of this wonderful gift the state has given us through the infill incentive district, to make some modifications to development impact fees within, within the area covered by this, by this policy. And this is a different scenario than what we talked about before, of how we had to, you know, treat everybody equally and have impact fees throughout the town. Yes, that was, that was correct, and what was done before, and it was right that we adopted an impact fee structure that has the fees across, across the board, but we do have a legal mechanism of modifying the fee structure within confines of this policy because of the infill incentive district. We've also looked at the scenarios of where a building exists, and there might be a property line going through it, and for all practical purposes, it's really one lot, but that building line can get in the way of certain building codes and fire codes and setbacks, and we wanted to make it easier for folks to be able to essentially marry those two lots or three lots or whatever it happens to be. Parking requirements, as you've seen in the DC zoning district, we've essentially have said, there's no onsite parking requirements, other than in some cases, if you have more intense commercial use, you might have a loading requirement, or if ADA requires it, you may still have ADA parking spaces. But we've tried to reduce the parking requirements in the downtown to some reasonable extent. Now, that's specifically in the downtown, in the downtown commercial zoning area. Now, outside of that, you still have a parking requirement, and what we're saying in this policy is that there may be opportunities to reduce the amount of parking, if we can show through an analysis, through a study, through some mechanism, that the parking is there, whether there may be parking on street, there may be parking, there may be a shared parking agreement, so maybe you have a use that's next to another use, and one, one use operates at night and one use operates during the day, or maybe you're next to a church that majority of time, they have a big parking lot that's not being utilized. We want to look at opportunities for the creative use of parking spaces. We also wanted to look at the opportunities to not mandate that every parking area be asphalt or concrete. That would help in cost substantially, but that would also help in allowing rainwater when, when we do get rain, to continue to permeate into, into the ground, which is essential in this area, and a trend that has been developing throughout the United States and beyond. So, and then also looking at minimizing the landscape requirements on a, on a project. In a lot of cases, that's something that you automatically have to do, because if we're encouraging folks to maximize their lot and to build out to the lot line, and potentially reduce the number of parking spaces that they have, they're gonna have less, less area for landscaping, and we've provided some provisions for, for that. So that's the kind of quick walkthrough, the policy tonight as it's, as it's proposed. The second item on the agenda is, is a discussion regarding the sign code. And again, on that item, I don't have a draft of amended sign code. What we're looking for on the sign code item is to get, get some potential ideas from folks about where they think the sign code may work or not work, what potentially we could change, and I have some ideas that we could present when we get to that item. But Mayor, Council, if it's all right with you, I think it would be a great idea to probably stick with this item first and see if there's any comment from, from the commission members, the general public, et cetera, and, and we'll look for that direction.
Thank you, Mark. Any member of the council having questions, Mark at this time?
Are we gonna be going to the commissions also?
Yeah. Bill, do you have anything? Right now?
Not right now.
Okay. Who's taking planning and zoning? Do you have any questions on what we're trying to do, or any comments?
Looking forward to hearing what the public has to say.
Go ahead, Gary, you guys speaking in the mic.
Sorry. I'm looking forward to what the public has to say. I've read the code, it's incredibly complicated, it needs to be condensed, and I'd like to hear what other people have to say about it.
Okay. We'll get to that after we go through, now we'll go to historical commission. Do you have any comments at this time that you'd like to make?
Yes, my name's Kathy Adam, and I did look up before I came here, the latest bulletin from the National Park Service, which I realize applies probably more to the historic district, but I think the nature of our town is also historic, whether it's within the actual boundaries. And some of the guidance they're giving now, after having very restrictive sign codes in the past, is that perhaps local guidelines have been too restrictive, and effectively, they are dictating what's coming out to be very bland, uniform signs, and which is not the original intent. And as we all know, when these historic buildings were built, it was a different time and era. And today, businesses, to attract people in, we have some other ways of doing that, and maybe we should consider it. I, I think the last thing I'd like to say is just being a resident in the town and having to, had to work with the code and listening to a lot of the business people, anything we can do to simplify the code. It's so complicated, and it's very difficult for even people well-meaning to try to really get their arms around just an initial cost. Is it bigger than a bread box? Can I even afford to do this? And it's very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the public that'd like to have a comment on this? Lynn?
I'm Lynn Smith, Commissioner, on Historic Commission. One of the things that bothers me is that when a building is vacated for a long length of time, their signs still stay there, and I think there should be some kind of ordinance where they have six months or whatever to get their signs down. I live next to the drugstore, and people still go there trying to get in, and the signs are still up, and they're nailed to the trees, and it really is, is a very bad blighted sight.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience? Well Lynn, I agree with you on the signs there at the old Rexall Drugstore.
Block stop.
Or, to me, it's still the old Rexall Drugstore that I grew up with. I would love to see that big sign or the sign that they used to have up there on top, that neon sign says Rexall.
Well, the Rexalls, all right, but I think the other ones that are hanging down in the canvas.
The banners?
The banners.
Banner sight signs.
And the ones nailed to the trees really irritate me.
Yeah. What can we do about that, Mark, under our existing code?
Well, Mayor, Mayor and Council, in regards to this, to the sign code, there are provisions in the sign code already that deal, that deal with obsolete or abandoned signage. And I can tell you specifically in this case, there, there is a code, a code violation being processed with this particular, with this particular building. In some cases, there are, in some cases, you get kind of torn about whether you want to remove the sign from a, from a building because it may make it, if it's a historic sign, if it's a really attractive sign that's part of the community fabric, you know, you, you have to debate whether you, you want to lose the sign or not, and whether it would make the building look worse or more abandoned than it, than it is. Majority of the cases, though, after a while, will, will provide notice to remove the, to remove the sign, particularly if it's just leftover banners and promotional signs like that, that really, it's like, there's no reason for them to be there anymore.
Okay. Going back to the, the process of the permitting, not only has it been brought up twice here by two different members, one planning zoning, one from historical, I too have had numerous complaints about the, the, the time it takes to get a permit done, or communication with the people that are trying to get the permit. I agree with you, Gary, it does need to be simplified, simplified, but, you know, we have to have a process that's fair and equitable, everybody that's coming in, whether it be pulled to you with their new divisions out there, or be here in the core, or be in the North Florence area, Florence Gardens area. Can we simplify it any more than you, that you have?
Well, Mayor and Council, a few issues that we're talking about tonight, and, and in general, as far as the overall process, yes, we've, we've been taking steps to continually do that, and, and we will continue to, to do that. So I think in regards to the adaptive reuse policy, though, what happens is, most of the issues that we encounter are in this, are in the core. And a lot of the delays and a lot of the frustration sometimes is because it's a, it's a little bit more challenging working with a building that's been around there forever. It was built to either no codes or built to codes from, that are not around anymore. So there's a lot of challenges doing that, and I think if we can keep working in that direction that we're doing on something like this, to make it easier to do redevelopment in the downtown, I think that inherently helps the process, because sometimes, you know, it, it's a little challenging on our part, too, because our, our hands get tied a little bit. So the goal of this policy is to make it easier for the folks that want to do the development, and then actually make it easier for, for staff as well, who wants to be there to try and facilitate the development. In regards to the sign code, yes, I absolutely agree that while the sign code, it's, it's been effective, it's, it's produced some good signs, but it is, it is restrictive, and I'll tell you, like Gary says, it's just cumbersome. It is, I agree, that it's, it's lengthy, and, and I think we can condense it, and we can focus the sign code on, on what it is that we want to achieve and what we want to allow, and not let so much of the, of those pages of the code focus on what's not, not allowed. So I think we clearly, you know, we can set that vision, and we can, and we can make that process a lot easier for the, for the sign code. So I think every little thing we do, whether, you know, it's, we've done a variety of code, code amendments, we, we adopted a lot of the changes with the permitting process under, under the state statutes, where we're mandated to, to process permits within a, within a certain timeframe, with our, the process is very public, so folks can see exactly when a permit came in, who is reviewing it, what the comments are, when that permit is due. We have to get a permit out the door by a specified time or risk returning the plan review fee or, or additional penalties. So there are changes that keep going on throughout, you know, other communities in the Town of Florence to, to make the process easier. And I think, you know, another good thing, too, that we're doing, and, you know, Jennifer Evans has taken the lead on this, is to, is to have the business center. We need to have a greater opportunity to work with the chamber and the businesses and, and others, to be able to just walk them through that process. Because, you know, yeah, quite frankly, you know, most of the time, it's not something that folks do on a daily basis of getting, getting a permit or doing a development. And so when they do it for the first time, it's like going, you know, you know, over to DMV for the first time, and you realize, oh wow, you know, I've got to fill out this form and stand in this line, and we'll make the process easier for folks, but I think also, it's a matter of, of providing additional education and making sure we're giving the folks the opportunity to, to really learn how the process works and how we can make it easier for them.
And I don't think there's any member of the council or mission that will want to do anything of keeping away from any safety issue for any of these buildings, whether they be in the down core, downtown core area or anywhere. I don't want to do anything, get away from that. The only thing I, now, let's talk about some of these historical buildings that we've got downtown, or that could be listed as historical if they were brought up to shape. What can we do as a town council about getting those businesses either being worked on, condemned? What can we do with the downtown area, Mark?
Mayor, Council, if I may, if I may start on that one, first of all. The Community Development Department with Mr. Eckoff has been working with the fire chief and our new fire marshal. They are creating policies and procedures that they're gonna start later this summer, starting to look at all those buildings in the downtown area with community development and start identifying which ones have code violations and which ones are fire hazards. You all may recall, the clerk and recorder's building burned down here a few months ago, and all the, the investigators that were out there and the people that were looking at that building were letting us know that we're lucky that the entire block did not go down. So the fire department, along with community development, is gonna start looking at that process in the next month, and start looking at each one of those buildings.
I think that's one of the biggest complaints I've heard about the buildings downtown. We know that they're, they're not big enough to sustain a really viable business, and then the people that buy them, or if they can, it takes a lot to bring them up to standards so that they can be open. But is there any way that we can work with them to get temporary occupancy after they reach a certain point of reconstruction or improvement?
Mayor, Council, yes, we'd gladly work with folks. If they start to go through the process and they can get the building safe for occupancy, we would gladly issue a temporary of occupancy for, you know, maybe it's a 60-day or 90-day temporary occupancy, as long as there's no life safety issues. If the remaining issues are, well, yes, you have to work on that second bathroom, or, or you have to do something else that's not a life safety issue, we would gladly let them get in there, get started and finish up on that requirement. We've done that even on, you know, on newer, newer development, when people just want to get up and, up and running. But you know, the, you know, there's, there's a lot of issues in the downtown, and part of the issue really is that, you know, at the end of the day, we can address the code issue, we can address fire safety issues, we can, we can address fees, we can make the process as easy as you want, but there, there are some folks that own buildings in some critical locations downtown that, that don't appear to be extremely anxious to, to redevelop or have their buildings, buildings occupied. So that does put us in a, in a, in a little awkward position sometimes.
The awkward position, we take here with fire inspection and so forth as that, and maybe even a health inspection, due to the fact of what is actually going on inside that building, what kind of varmints are living there and so forth as that, is that correct?
Certainly, there is always, there is always the, the code angle, and, and, you know, we've been, like, like the town manager indicates, now that we've had the town marshal position, we're working closer, more closely with them, and we'll work to, to address that issue. Yeah, you know, we want to work with folks as much as possible. I mean, at the end of the day, we'd love to have every building occupied. What we don't want, though, is to, is to have a building situation where we have an, we have an unsafe occupancy, or we have an abandoned building that's unsafe, because that not only with the buildings being so close together in the downtown area, again, that could have not only a detrimental impact on their individual building, but it, you know, it could be a situation that spreads to an adjacent building. So we want to continue to, to stay on top of that issue.
One last thing on the downtown area or anywhere in the area. What constitutes having to bring an engineer on board? Because I've heard numerous complaints about having to bring an engineer on board for, for stuff that really doesn't need it, but it's in our code. What can we do about that to help these people out? Because an engineering firm's gonna cost you money to come down here and do that. What can be done to do that?
Well, I have a comment on that. You know, that's exactly, just to put in a door or a window, as long as it's up to code, I don't understand why we require engineering either, other than I've been told that if it's a commercial building, then it has to be engineered. But I don't understand, as long as it's built to code or installed to code, I don't understand why we, for somebody to do a, let's say, a thousand dollar job, to have to spend 2,000 or 3,000 on an architect or an engineer, to engineer it, draw it up and give you the drawings, when a simple drawing would be fine, and as long as the inspector inspects it and it's up to code. I mean, yeah, that's, that's happened quite a few times, and I'm just wondering, yeah, we need to come up with a solution on that.
Well, the, the building inspectors, they do, they do have some discretion. So in a case of somebody having a project where all they're doing simply is changing out an existing window with the same identical window, that's certainly a different story than if somebody comes in and does new, you know, cuts a, cuts a hole in a structural wall and puts in, puts in a window, or adds a gas line, or does plumbing, or things like that. So remember, at the end of the day, you know, the building inspectors, they, they're working, they're working for you, Mayor and Council, and they're working for your constituents and the, and the public, and they're trying to ensure the public's safety to the greatest extent possible. So they have that leeway in the code, but we follow the same codes that every other jurisdiction applies. If, if they're doing substantial work on a project, something other than that is cosmetic or it's a simple change out with a like, like item, you know, nine times out of 10, they're gonna require an architect or an engineer, and you're gonna go from community to community, same, define the same requirement, because at the end of the day, our obligation is to ensure public, public safety. So if you're affecting a structural wall, if you're affecting electrical, if you're affecting plumbing, particularly in the case, you know what, if you're doing your plans without having, you know, maybe a draft person has done your plan and not an architect. If an architect or an engineer is drawing up your plans, then greater liability is going, going on them to ensure that the plan is done to, to code and it's gonna be, it's gonna be saved.
Well, I'm talking about, you, you just said what's in here already. Yeah, you're saying, okay, it's all right, if there's an existing door and they're changing it out. I'm talking about if you want to put in another door or another window, you expose the framing or whatever is there structurally. What is the matter with, if it's put in properly with the right cripples and the headers and everything's up to code, and, and it's exposed to where the inspector can see it, I don't see why we would have to have it engineered just to put in a door or a window. I mean, as long as it's exposed, you know, without drywall on there, whatever, and we know it's not, the building's not gonna collapse when they cut the opening, that's, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not, I'm not talking about replacing windows, I'm talking about sometimes a new win, somebody needs a new window or a new door, and to end up making them spend $4,000 or whatever on a simple, you know... end up making them spend four thousand dollars or whatever on a simple, you know, just, that's, that's what I'm getting at. A lot of it's just kind of common sense. I know, I know we've got, you know, rules and, and you do have to follow rules, but it comes to a point to where it's, I think it's, it's not conducive to helping people get, get businesses open when we do that, put an extra burden on them.
Bill, wouldn't you, wouldn't you think in some incidents it's cost prohibitive for people to do that and they're not going to open the business?
Well, that's, that's exactly, I mean, that's the point, that's.
And I think not only we talked, we know one thing we're talking about, but we had a incident with a, a building out in the Florence Gardens area that was running around circles over replacing the windows. The majority of windows you're going to be replacing now could be a little bit larger size or a little bit smaller if you're replacing will, outside windows. And, and they're going to be more, say, energy wise and everything like that. And why do we have to have an engineer, you know, tell somebody that, you know, just because you're going to add a window that's six inches longer or taller, deeper, what are you going to say? You know, why? I, I, I just don't understand that, I guess. It's in the same place as the other window was, except it's just a little bit bigger. And just common sense wise would say that that building ain't going to fall down because you added six inches to a window. What it sounds like, and, and I could be wrong, is that you're a lot concerned with liability issues to the general public if something was to happen and the liability come back on the town for issuing that permit without an engineering study, is that correct?
I think the inspectors in our department were concerned with making sure that we, that we do our job. So, and part of our job is, is ensuring the public's safety of the community of Florence and ensuring that we, that we enforce the codes that, that have been adopted by the town of Florence. So, and that, again, that's no different than any other community. So, you know, and if you're doing a commercial, and then also there are, if you're talking about commercial, then there's going to be state requirements that apply as far as having a licensed contractor, somebody that can do commercial work. So we're looking, we are looking at, you know, licensed contractors, engineers, architects in some cases, but there are, there are some things that can be done that are, that are not, that are not, that are not huge, that are not life safety issues, that are not structural, that are not related to ingress egress. You have to realize, you know, when we're talking about doors and windows, we're talking about a variety of things. Is that a, is that a fire rated wall? Is that an, is that a point where there's an ingress or egress? Are you expanding the, the area of, of the room from over to a certain amount of square feet where all of a sudden that might trigger the need for additional egress or, or firewalls or sprinkler system, whatever it may be? So, you know, there's a lot of individual scenarios that, that could apply. The bottom, the bottom line is we're, we're doing our best job to enforce the, the codes of the town of Florence and keep people safe. And then, you know, we have an intense obligation to, to do that, you know? I can, I could easily sleep at night, you know, if, if a zoning decision didn't go the right way. But you know what? We're thinking about those decisions that, about the, the safety of people's structures, you know, whether it's their structure or where the general public is walking into it. General public, when you go into any other city, you walk into a commercial building, you, you just automatically have a sense that, you know, that jurisdiction has ensured that that building is safer for you to walk, walk into. Well, people do that in Florence as well, so that's our obligation. Now, we can adopt whatever codes we want though. Town of Florence could say, you know what, we don't want to have any, I don't know if we could go as far as, not seeing we have any building codes, but we could, we could adopt the building codes with, with hundreds of amendments and say, you know what, we don't want to do this, we don't want to do that, we don't want to do the other, we don't want to charge these fees. We could do, we could do that. But I think we have a very fair process and, you know, you brought up a couple scenarios, but you know, a couple scenarios and, you know, when 99% of the projects really don't have those, those issues.
Well, we're talking about remodeling here. We're not talking about building new buildings. And if you're saying we're going to stick with what we've got, then I don't even know why we're wasting our time here. No, we do need to simplify this. We do need to do, make some changes or we're not going to get anything done downtown.
And what, and what you are doing, Member Hawkins?
And some of these buildings are, you know, they've, they've been standing here for, you know, a hundred, a lot of them, a hundred plus years. A lot of them have been vacant for 50 years and they're still standing. You know, I mean, it's not like they're going to fall down tomorrow because somebody goes in there and opens up a business, you know, it, but I don't know.
Sometimes they do fall down and sometimes they do have fires with that.
Some of them do, but there's, you know, it's.
I want to get back to the code violations, especially for the buildings that are empty. So we go through and we find code violations. What is our recourse after that? Have any codes that we can hold those people accountable or what are we going to do about that? Are we just going to go through and get a lift of code violations and then let it go?
That's, that's an excellent comment. You know, in the scenario of pursuing code violations, the, the process is just simplified, but we would, we would notify the property owner of the code, code violations citing the specific codes that are, that are not being complied with. We'd give them an opportunity to comply, to appeal or to comply with those, those codes by a certain timeframe. They choose not to comply, you know, if it's not an immediate life safety issue, we're going to give them some additional time to, to comply. You will get to the point if you have non-compliance where you either end up in a municipal, you either end up in municipal court citing, citing the folks for the violations or the town ends up taking care of the violations themselves and placing a lien on the property and/or condemning the property or demolishing the property, placing a lien on the property all through the legal, the legal process. But you know, there's, there's potential outcomes or you get the code, you get the code situation rectified or you, you drag it out through a legal, a legal process and you have fines and everything else, but you don't necessarily get the building quickly fixed and occupied. Or you lose, you lose the building completely and then we're probably sitting with a lien on the property and, and may or may not ever get that money, money back. So, and you know, we've had a small amount in the budget to do, to deal with that particular scenario. So we've had many cases where we've gone into cleaning, clean up a property that, that had life safety issues on it where after multiple notices, the property owner didn't, didn't comply. So we've cleaned up the property, provided notice that we were doing that, clean, clean it up and then sometimes they'll turn around and, and they'll pay us, they just figured it was easier for us to deal with it than to them to do it. Or they, or they don't pay us and then we have a lien on the property again. So it's in, it's, it's not an easy process. It's not always a speedy process and sometimes it can be a costly process, particularly if you're going to start going after buildings in, in the core area. So a lot of challenges with it and a lot of potential financial issues with that.
Yeah, one of the people that probably tell us more about it is sitting right up here with us because he went through a lot of this permitting process when he redid his building downtown, so let's hear from you.
Well, I agree with Councilman Hawkins and the mayor. I think we do have to look at some of this stuff and get it organized. I believe that possibly there are some things that our own planning and zoning department staff could do. I think they could go ahead and start going out and giving, if a person wants to do something in an existing building that's already in occupancy, especially the older buildings, if they want to do something, make some change, we could, I think our department could go out with it and give them a courtesy inspection and look at it to say, okay, this is what you have to do. When you get this far, come out and we'll inspect it to see if it's done right. But to go ahead and hire engineers, I did, but that was because I didn't trust the building myself. But it came out perfect. But that's one thing. The other thing I have to ask and I'll direct this at the town manager, how long have we had this fire marshal in place?
The fire marshal started at the end of last year.
Okay, and we've lost a building, right?
Yes, sir.
By the end of summer, we could lose another building. I think we have codes already in place, even though they might not be what we're going to come out with in the end, but we have them in place. We have a fire marshal and the fire chief is sitting over there. We need to get this man on the job doing some of these old buildings and getting things rolling because we're going to lose more buildings if we don't do it.
Vice Mayor Council, I absolutely agree with you.
Thank you.
Tommy?
As I discussed the last time we had this discussion, I, I don't have an issue with streamlining some of the process. My concerns again are for the building safety, the safety to the public. I mean, I just came back from a state historic preservation conference and they discussed issues very similar to, to this, the problems that all of the older buildings have in, in going in and trying to modify them into something usable. We had a presentation by True Value and discussion of some of the things that they had to go through in order to become in compliance, everything right down to the glass storefront of the building. I mean, you, you don't think that that's an issue, but, but it's, it's a code to have tempered glass within a certain area of your door, otherwise if it, if it shatters or if it breaks, it has a chance to cut somebody up rather than having something that's tempered that'll shatter in smaller pieces. There's a, there's a lot to code and I really can't support watering our code down in order to allow that stuff when it comes to public safety and the safety of, of the business owners. I, I agree in, in some of the instances where we can create shared public restrooms, things like that where, where codes are non, non-safety, the, having the dirt parking lots that we can, we can postpone some of the requirements for, for that type of stuff. But for the building safety, we cannot sacrifice structural, fire safety, electrical safety, chemicals that are brought into buildings for, depending on what the use of the building is. If it's begun, it's going to become some type of a kitchen type area, the health services that need to be involved in that. Other than that, streamlining the processes is, and communication. The other thing too, do we really want to get into the business of being the handyman's engineer? I mean, do we want the town to, to take on the responsibility of, of every handyman coming in and saying, okay, I want to build this patio over here, let me, to help me design this? I mean, you, you either got the resources to do that when you start the project or you don't. I mean, you can't, you can't expect the taxpayers of the town to subsidize an engineer in order for you to be able to perform your project.
I wasn't referring to.
And I didn't, I didn't insinuate or anybody referring to anything. These are just basic comments to think about.
Well, okay, the point I was trying to make was I don't see where a person, if it's a, if it's a simple window or door or something along that line, I don't see that, as long as it is, and our inspectors know how a door is supposed to be framed, how it's in a window, if the person putting it in draw, makes the drawing theirself, it's an accurate drawing and it meets code, I don't see why we have to have it engineered. I mean, that, you know, that's, that's all I'm talking about. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to cut public safety of tempered windows. Yeah, that's common knowledge. Any, any entryway on a, on a commercial building has to have tempered glass, that's true. And I think the doors have to be that also, but.
By the way, we did find out on those tempered windows, we went to the same meeting, there is a surface that can be put on those current windows that stops them from shattering.
Well, that's an option there. That's what I'm, that's the kind of thing I'm, I'm talking about, you know, there's, there's options out there. We just need to dig them up and.
Well, and also piggybacking onto what you had mentioned, the reason I'm going to connect it into a personal, if you are going to have carpet put into your home at Home Depot and you go to the store, you bring your measurements of what you want them to do. They still send somebody out to go over and remeasure it even though it's completely accurate and detailed. The purpose of that is just some, a safety net to double check it. We have the resources within our town. I understand about in some cases it's, it isn't necessary to hire an engineer, but we do have to have that secondary checks and balances, but that's where our own town staff goes out and does the inspections. Am I correct in my understanding of this?
Absolutely. You know, in the, in the perfect, perfect world, the process is that plans are, plans are submitted, plans are reviewed, permit is issued, the inspectors go out, project is completed, final certificate of occupancy is issued. We have a lot of folks, just like in, in any smaller town, a lot of folks that, that whether they're residential or business, in smaller towns, you're always going to end up with the folks that, that, that need a little assistance. And we have inspectors going, going out there constantly to help people and to say, you know what, you can, you can do it this way, you could do it that way, it probably would save you some money to do it this way. So we do have inspectors holding hands all the time. We do, I appreciate the other comment that was made, you know, that we, the inspectors are not there to be a hired, you know, hired handyman or to take on the liability of an architect or an engineer, et cetera, but they are there to help, to help people, especially the small business owners or the individual homeowners, you know, an older couple in a house or something that wants to do something, they go out there on a regular basis and, and help people. The best thing that can ever happen though, so anybody out there in TV land or in the paper or whatever it is, the best thing you can do though is if you have an improvement project, is go, is go to your community development department, your building department, whatever it happens to be, whether it's our town or another, go there first because the project will always be more complex and more expensive, more challenging if you try to fix it after you've already, after you've already started or after you've completed the project. If you come into us first, we'll give you all the guidance in the world and say, you know what, you know what, if you did it this way, you know, if you're re-roofing or something, if you do it this way, wow, you can save a lot of money by, by doing that. Or if you opened the door over there instead of over there or you, you took away that window instead of that window, that, that, that's a hu- huge opportunity for you to, to save money and comply with the code. So it's always great to start there first and we, and we'll, we'll spend all day talking to folks at the counter or setting up meetings or going out to their property and, and looking for those opportunities to help folks.
You brought up something I want to talk about. We charge a person that's going to re-roof his home a permit fee. And the permit fee is for an inspection on, after the shingles or tile comes off. I was told before that that is to make sure that we go out there and that, that there's nothing wrong with the plywood that's underneath of it, that's attached to it. Is that the main reason for a permit for, because I, I guess I have a problem or I have a question on that, is if a person is going to expend the money to re-roof his home to protect his property, the re-roof, the, the new roof done increase the value of the property, is that correct?
Well, I, I guess you could look at a variety of scenarios, but the, there are some cases where if you're doing a, a second layer or something like that, where you may not actually have to come to us. But if you get into where you're adding a third layer or a fourth layer on a roof or completely pulling the roof over, then we'll, then we'll get involved. And why do we get involved? Well, because the roof is a, is a critical component of your, of your, of your home. It may have structural ability, it may have a structural function to it. Obviously you, it protects the, the elements from getting inside of your, your home. You want to look for wood damage or structural damage. You want to make sure that the new roof that you're adding is of, of, the weight of that new roof is not greater than the, the weight of the previous roof because maybe structurally that, that, that can't support the heavier roof. So that's why they, they get involved in, in, in asking for a permit for those situations. Just again, to make sure that it's complying with code and you're putting a safe roof on your, on your house. And putting a roof on your house that hopefully is then not going to blow into your neighbor's property the next winds that we have.
I, I guess the thing I'm looking at on that, if a person, not mainly the shingles blowing off, but the condition of the, the wood that's on, a person that is spending that much money to put on a new roof and he comes across a place where the old roof had leaked and the water got down and ruined the piece of plywood there, before they put a new roof on, that person that expended all that money going to replace that plywood. on, that person that expended all that money is going to replace that plywood anyway. I mean, common sense would tell you that, I think.
Well, I have to probably disagree with you in that situation because a lot of the folks that we see that are getting roofs in the downtown core are folks that are not going to go up on the roof and see what the roofer is doing. It may be an older couple, it may be folks that don't really have expertise, and, I work in a department that does this all the time, but I wouldn't do anything up on my roof. We see in that particular industry that there's a lot of opportunity for folks to kind of get by, not necessarily always do things the right way. So, that's an area, definitely, that it's good to have somebody look at what you're doing and making sure that it's done properly.
So, they don't get ripped off?
So, they don't get ripped off. And that's another part of the reason, you know, that we have plan review and a permit process is we're helping, you know, the consumer again because, you know, it's not a perfect world that we live in, unfortunately.
Gary, you've heard us discussing, we've been going, you have anything? Will you speak into the mic? Thank you.
I keep forgetting where I am. From the eyes of a contractor, I'm absolutely amazed and continue to be amazed at what people think meets the code. And when you're talking about modifying a building, there are people out there in this community that could do a good drawing that meets code and could submit it to get a building permit, and there would be nothing wrong with that owner-builder working under those conditions. The person knows what they're doing, they were able to do the drawing, they submitted it. And then there's other people out there that are dangerous with a hammer, and they should hire a contractor who has the ability to do what they need to do. And the contractor does not necessarily have to be a licensed architect or engineer, but if the contractor's experienced in that work and can apply for the permit with the right requirements, a drawing, a narrative, whatever, then there's nothing wrong with allowing that permit to go forward. And then, of course, you get to another level where you're doing not just a remodel, but you're really going to work on this building. You're going to do a lot of structural work to it. In every instance I've been involved in, when there's that much money going into the building, we generally start out with an engineering, structural engineer, architect kind of team to put together the whole package and a cost estimate so that the owner knows what he's getting into before he gets there. So, you have those levels, and if we could allow the people of our community to work in those different levels, then what it would do is it would keep people from scabbing, which is a term we use that means we're going to hide the work because we don't want the town to see it. Costs too much money to apply for a permit. So, I know how to do it, I know I'll get turned down because I didn't go get an engineer, so I'm going to scab it. I'll hide the work, and when it's done, I'll say it was always there. So, that's where you are with that.
All right, so this is off this subject, it's back on the streamlining.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
I'm sorry. This is back on the streamlining the process, which I don't think affects the safety of any building code. I don't know if you're aware of the process, but in the historic district, anybody who's designated historic, the minute you pull a building permit, it triggers a design review by this commission. This commission only meets once a month, and it's been very amenable and staff has been great in an emergency in pulling people together, but that month is critical time just to get through this commission, and then you have to get through your building permit process. So, I'm assuming that clock on the building permit doesn't start until they've gotten through a design review. And for a lot of people, six weeks, eight weeks can kill a project to get it done. So, my suggestion is to consider this. I'd like to see some sort of process, not that we're looking for more work, where there's already a predefined second date during the month, so it's only a minimum of two weeks, and it's not a kind of fire drill to pull us all together to get a quorum. I think I've heard other towns who have something called, something like no effect. So, if there's a building permit pulled and there's no effect to the HDAC commission, that we shouldn't even be talking about this because it's just a building permit, it's not affecting design review, that someone in Mark's office could sign off on no effect, but it still should come before the commission so that if we find out things are happening that inadvertently do affect our historic district, we want to know about it, but there's no reason why somebody should have to wait four weeks just for a historic district commission to meet that may not have any particular knowledge on that building permit.
Good point, thank you. Chris, excuse me.
Also, looking at that list up there, I don't know if what came from the state, if there's anything in there about green incentives, and I would like to see something like that. I was at the same conference as Tom, in fact, we all were, and I want to thank you all for sending us. But there were some wonderful stories of infill and building constructions like in Phoenix and Tucson, and there was always a green component in there. There was, so if there was a way we could do an incentive to encourage people to do things, energy efficient, solar, whatever, as long as it fits within the codes and particularly in the historic district, maybe by having to go through some of the hoops that you have to go through on the other things, if we could provide some sort of financial incentive to go green or energy efficient, it would maybe balance out the equation.
Thank you. Does any other member of the audience have anything I'd like to bring up to, to listen to discuss these issues? Does any other member of the...Carol, do you have something else?
I do, I appreciate your insight, I just want to comment on that. And also, you had mentioned earlier that the code is quite complex, and we understand that we've heard that before as well, but you've had an opportunity to work with it. Where would you recommend we start, like prioritizing?
It's on.
Is that directed to Gary?
Yes.
Actually, it's been a long time since I worked with it. I just got commissioned about a week or two weeks ago. So, the only comment I'm making is when I go through the sign code and make believe I'm a building owner, going to submit a sign, I find that the language is overly complicated. It's above the level where it should be, to put it that way. And, oh my God, there's so many categories, it's incredible. And some of them cross-reference each other, make you blind trying to go back and forth on the pages. So, a little more user-friendly, I guess, is the words I would use.
Okay, thank you. And we also have a former Planning and Zoning Commission member in the audience who has a lot of opportunities in working with it. John, would you care to share any insight at this time?
John, would you come up to the podium so everybody can hear you?
Well, the last time I spoke to you, I was trying to get the rules simplified, as you recall. So, I think that a lot of the code can be simplified. I agree with the sign code, and I think we just need to spend some time and just go through it, you know, each code that we have and say, you know, what's necessary and what's not necessary, what's the purpose here, what are we trying to do? And the sign code, I would let the Planning and Zoning Team make recommendations as to how would they rewrite that code.
Okay, thank you. If I could add one more thing, as a director of facilities that also deals with our zoning department in permits for some of the things that we've done in several projects, including the 1891 and several modifications, things that were within the historic district, things that were outside of the historic district, we haven't really had any issues working with the town staff to get this stuff done. So, we haven't, we've had any problems, so...
Anybody?
Yeah, I'd like to bring it up that in sitting in the meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission, one thing that I've really seen is that the town of Florence does work with those individuals that are putting their information through in a packet, and they've had numerous meetings in the past prior to attending or having their item presented to the Planning and Zoning. So, the issue of them walking in and having issues with design or not knowing the code has been minimized. I haven't seen any problems with it at all.
You're talking about new construction?
More new construction.
Right, okay, yeah. I wanted to clarify that because...
A lot of ours have been modification to the buildings, the modifications. We don't have a lot of new construction. We've got additions of signage, we've got some things that come in that are structural for modifications within the building, electrical, any major electrical, we go through the town planning department. We usually consult them, we usually consult them in everything that we do, and then they give us, "This needs to go through this channel or this needs to go through that channel," and we haven't really had any issues with that.
Well, I didn't say we had any issues with the Planning and Zoning Department doing their job. What we're talking about is trying to simplify what's required. No, they've done a fine job, yeah.
Tommy, let me ask you, when you brought that up, who do you use your engineering as your engineer to submit the plans to Mark?
It depends on how big the project is. Swan Engineer was the one that did the 1891. Depending on the size of the project, we work within, I guess you'd call it a gray shell where unless there's a change to a service panel or a major electrical that's done in it, all of the wire is above in boxes and suspended ceilings. There have been areas where we've had to cut in a door or different things like that. So, we run, we go work with the Planning and Development Department and they point us in the right direction for that. We also work with our county engineers and we run things through our building safety department as well, so we've got, we're kind of trying to get at different perspectives of projects that we're doing.
Okay. Well, I think the thing that we came out with tonight is a couple of things. One, is to simplify the process as much as we can at your level, bring it back to us, make sure that, you know, we know what's going on. Wouldn't you, would everybody agree with it? That's one of the things that we came out tonight with simplifying. And I think the second thing that came out, kind of under the way, is to get the people to talk to you before they start the projects, to get them to go to the Planning and Development Department, take their plans in with them or whatever, and talk to you before they start the project. I think that's one of the things that I've seen, is if you take it there, you're going to be told yea, nay, or here's an improvement on it, how you cut costs or whatever. But I think that the cost factor on, and we've been mainly talking about the downtown core area, but the other thing we have to take a look at now, and I'd like to go into it a little bit, is on the impact fees in the new area that we've created. Now, we did this before, and I guess we were doing it illegally, but we did it before and we had actually some construction begin. And we had houses, new houses built here in town, and there was quite a few of them that were built, if we remember back, right in this area and then up on the southern end of town. What impact fees are we charging now to people to build a home on a vacant lot in Florence?
Mayor and Council, the fees are going to vary. If you do have a lot in the downtown that has had an existing building on it, we're not going to charge an impact fee, we're just going to consider that the impact on that lot has been established, so...but in the downtown core, the town is going to be the water and sewer provider, so that's going to be the most substantial part of your development impact fee. So, you are looking at a, you know, a $10,000, $11,000 impact fee on a single family home if you're in the downtown area. Now, the fees are going to vary throughout the community, particularly after the last study that we did, because if you go then beyond the downtown area, you have to look at the level of service that we provide, whether we have a level of service at all, such as if you go far enough north, we don't have a level of service on parks, so we don't charge a park impact fee right now. So, we want to get some parks built so we establish that level of service. Johnson Utilities provides water and sewer in a lot of the growth areas, so we don't charge a water and sewer impact fee in those areas. There also are multiple development agreements out there that have said, you know, your fee is this or your fee is that, or you're not going to be charged a fee for this because you're in a CFD or you provided, you know, a fire station site or whatever it may be. So, in Anthem right now, the development impact fee is about $3,000 or so, plus or minus for a single-family home. That's because they're in the CFD, they're in the Johnson Utility Service area, and they have provided a lot of the infrastructure themselves, namely to be in the CFD. So, there's a lot of different scenarios. What we've talked about in this particular policy is really where we need the most help on encouraging the development because I tend to believe that everything north of the river, as the market recovers, a lot of that stuff is just going to happen on its own. Very attractive development opportunities, growth and development opportunities, we really need to provide that extra boost and incentive in the downtown area. So, that $10,000 impact fee on a single-family home in downtown is a huge deal. If you look at the high school house that we had recently, we saw what that went for and you saw what it cost to build, it's a little bit, it's challenging if you add an extra $10,000 to that price tag. So, I think there's an opportunity through this, and keep in mind also that, you know, this isn't something that we have to set in stone, it's something that we could adopt this policy and we could review it a year from now. If growth is coming back so strong that, you know what, we don't need to offer as many incentives in the downtown, we could look at modifying what that fee is. But I would encourage the mayor and council, if you're so inclined, to definitely look at that aspect of the adaptive reuse program policy, because I think you can modify some of the requirements on plumbing or bathrooms or parking or, you know, make it easier to get a change of occupancy, addressing the codes and whatnot. That impact fee is still going to be a big deal, and you have the opportunity through this tool, it's really a rare bird, or very, just a handful of communities that have adopted the infill incentive tool, and I would love to not just have it sitting there on our shelves but to actually be able to use it, and this is a great opportunity to do that.
What would that do to the impact fees if we adopt it?
Well, Mayor and Council, there obviously, you know, if you adjust the fee structure in any way, lowering the fee structure, particularly on development impact fees, obviously we're going to collect reduced development impact fees. But the belief is that, you know, anything that we can do to encourage the development, that hopefully those positive things that result in the fact of actually just getting projects done, getting the rooftops and getting some additional commercial development, anything we can do on that end is going to, I believe, be an offset to whatever that fee may be. But as we, if we adopt this, and then concurrently we're looking at these two major annexations, one way or another, we're going to have to come back and review, we're going to have to present to you a new development impact fee study, because number one, those two big annexations, whether we get one or we get them both, or whether we do this, we're going to have to analyze again exactly how we're going to get our infrastructure built and what the fee structure, and how that would change the fee structure potentially we don't collect development impact fees in a certain area. Or now we have, you know, all this other new growth area where we're going to collect additional impact fees and have to really work hard to establish a level of service one way or another. Unfortunately, we're going to have to hire the consultant again to kind of go through that process and update the development impact fee study and address that. But I think in this case in the downtown, you know, the benefits of doing something are going to be offset by not doing anything. And I see there's a comment, Mayor, on the other side of council.
I do. I saw a few jaws drop in the audience, so I just wanted to take a second to clarify, and I will need your assistance. When you mentioned Anthem impact fees are $3,000 versus Florence impact fees $10,000 to $11,000, I wanted... Um, I wanted to add in, you had mentioned it doesn't include fees such as the wastewater and the sewer as well as, we're going to get into this a little bit later, with the taxes, um, the tax fee basis up there. Um, Sun City, they pay roughly seventeen hundred to thirty-five hundred in taxes to the town where all lots are valued at eighteen thousand. Anthem Parkside pays sixteen hundred to thirty-four hundred in taxes where all lots are valued at eighteen thousand. Town of Florence, Florence Gardens pays a hundred and forty-five to three hundred and twenty-five dollars where all lots hold a value of five thousand to seven thousand five hundred. Sunrise Estates Community, um, a one thousand six hundred and sixty-one square foot home pays taxes of one thousand four hundred and sixty with a land value of six thousand five hundred. Caliente pays ninety to three hundred and fifty a year in taxes to the Town of Florence with all lots valued at six thousand. After you break down the information, um, Anthem contributes two point five million per thousand homes. Florence Gardens contributes two hundred and fifty thousand per thousand homes. Caliente contributes three hundred thousand per thousand homes and Sunrise Estates contributes two hundred and ten thousand with a hundred and fifty home development community. So, I was just looking that over and I wanted to make sure that people understood that everything is a balance of where it is, whereas the community north of us also contributes into that CFD, one, two, and eventually three. So, if you could just emphasize that a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. There, there is the factor of the Anthem at Merrill Ranch community is getting their water and sewer infrastructure from Johnson Utilities. So, the largest components of your, of your development impact fee schedule are your water, your sewer, and your trans, and your transportation. Well, they're getting the water and sewer from Johnson Utilities and they've put in, as you can see, anybody can see driving through there, they've put in massive amounts of the roadway in, infrastructure. So, that's been offset in their transportation impact, impact fee. Um, they don't have public facilities for parks, but they have a substantial investment in private facilities that are meeting the current service levels of everyone in the, in the community there today. So, they've put in, they've had a substantial investment in the community. And those rooftops then are in turn going to have a substantial return in the commercial development um, that, that is there today and will be coming for, for years to come. So, um, anyhow. And, you know, impact, impact fees are just, are, are one, one piece of the pie. Revenue, as you know, comes, we're budget item on the agenda tonight, revenue comes from a variety of, variety of sources. So, we don't collect a ton of development impact fee in the core because there hasn't been a, um, a ton of development in the, in the core in, in, in the last seven or, or eight years, quite frankly. The development that has occurred sometimes has occurred where there was already an existing building, so there wasn't a impact fee. Or for a while, we had that arrangement where the impact fees weren't, weren't collected. Um, so, I don't think it would have a substantial impact from a budget perspective, uh, but I think that it would, it could potentially, uh, you know, help somebody make up that decision that's sitting on the fence of do I build, do I build or not? Do I wanna buy five lots to put homes on? Yeah, if I can, if I can run that incentive across five lots, that's a huge, that's a huge deal. And that might just allow me to build some homes and do more than break even.
Now, I know there's also, um, you know, there's concern where we go into Florence Gardens. Um, Mr. Buckley, would you be able to help me explain this a little bit better in terms of the development of that and the impact fees because we've discussed it before?
Whether you agree this or not, I'm not particularly prepared.
No, that's okay. Our goal is we want to, we've taught, we've had extensive conversations about infill and trying to fill.
I, I will give you my opinion.
The microphone's not on.
Which one?
Either one.
Either one.
Hang on.
How about now? No?
Nope.
Now we have three of all work probably. Um, first place, you have to look at the, um, uh, from the developer's end. The city has their needs and the developer chooses based on impact fees where to go. Just that simple. Um, Florence Gardens is a, a little bit different from the standpoint that they bonded uh, for the sewer and water. Um, bought the system originally from, uh, Mr. Conchel and, uh, turned it over to the city. Um, when they did that, they paid approximately half of the people out there paid cash right then. And the balance of the, uh, properties was bonded at roughly a thousand dollars, a little over a thousand dollars a lot, and have been paying eight percent interest on that for the last ten years now, going on eleven. Um, the town in two thousand and two, uh, decided to put these impact fees on. And, um, your mayor then, is the, now the mayor, uh, put down his gavel and came down to the podium to speak against imposition of impact fees on Florence Gardens and Old Town Florence. And the statement was that he feared greatly that it would adversely affect the development on the infill lots. There was a moratorium of about three years granted. And during the time period that things were booming. So, how much effect that had, we, it's hard to say because everything was moving. The council decided at the recommendation of the staff to impose those fees at the end of that time. And that was oh-seven, oh-eight. About the time it was, uh, becoming very difficult to give away houses. The, uh, the point is that in Florence Gardens, when they, they came up with their new fees of, uh, about twelve thousand three hundred and eight dollars, they'd, um, and then about a year later, they said, well, they're only gonna be thirty-six hundred. And then about a year later, they said, well, guys, they're back up to, now they're, counting hookups, they're about seventy-two hundred bucks. That does count hookups. You've gotta dig down into those, well, first place. What happened then in both Old Town Florence and Florence Gardens, there is no development on infill lots. None. There have been three houses in the last five years in Florence Gardens. I imagine that's about the same ratio of development on Old Town, I don't know, but it's not very good. Uh, that means that any revenue from the city is non-existent. It's not doing the city any good to have revenue, uh, have impact fees. Uh, in those instances, it just is not working. The necessity of some impact fees, I believe, is, is reasonable and fair. Fire and safety, for example, I don't think anybody could argue about that. Uh, when you break it down, where their library fund in Florence Gardens is two hundred dollars, that's not much, you know? You could argue whether that's reasonable or not. I do not think it's reasonable at all to have roads at fifteen hundred dollars and, uh, what's the other one, uh? Um, of about the same amount of money. Oh, um, uh, it's, no, parks is only two hundred dollars, I thought. The library was two hundred, you're right. It's parks about fifteen hundred dollars. I, I don't think that's reasonable. Uh, the, uh, point is that you've got catch twenty-two. It is not doing you any good, period. It's not doing you any good. And anything you can do, and I think it's admirable that you're trying to do something about it. Uh, one of the arguments, it has been right along that you had to treat everybody equally. I submit to you that, uh, the state came out with a great detail about how you had to do certain things, library being one of the big ones, uh, parks was another. And, uh, at first, your impact fees were, did not, uh, correspond with the state mandated, uh, situation, but now, uh, they went back, you went back and rewrote those in such a way that where you're saying, well, that's our cost and the city is entitled to reimbursement of its cost. That's fine, maybe they are, but look at what the result is. It has not worked, folks. And, uh, anything you can do, any way you can figure it out to redo these fees to where it's a, a situation where you can encourage, uh, on the infill lots, on new lots, on the new development, on the development we're planning up on Florence Gardens. We expect to pay the fees. But you plan on it going in is different from having it imposed later on. Those people have been paying taxes for, since nineteen seventy-two. The, uh, in downtown Florence is, uh, longer than that. Um, the, the sewer and water situation, I know you're smart enough to figure out a way around that, okay? So, anyway, that's, uh, that's my, my feelings on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I look, this way I look at the impact fees here in the core and out in Florence Gardens. We have vacant land there. We all know that it takes people, the studies have been done about Florence on the main street of Florence. We've had numerous studies done, what Tom did, put in a two-story building that, where people can live on top and shop on the bottom. We've talked about getting the people downtown to shop in the stores that are open. We want a grocery store so bad here in this community, it's, it's amazing. We're not gonna get it without the people. We've got vacant lots in this core area that have already constructed city streets on all sides of them, or at least two sides. You've got water mains and sewer mains that have already been there. Somebody's been paying the taxes on that property and they're already there. I don't see charging an impact fee in areas that already have the existing services provided to that area. To me, that is one of the biggest detriments we have about getting new homes on the vacant lots here in town. Is it fair to those that, that have had to do it? I don't know. But if we're trying to do something to make Florence grow in the downtown core area, we've gotta do something like that. That has been put in, it's already been paid for. I don't know how many times over it's been paid for by the citizens that are already here. Are we helping somebody else out? Probably. But is it for the beneficial, benefit of the whole town? I think that is also a probability. That's, I don't have any more comments. Does anybody else have any on this section before we go into the sign section?
I just wanna make one thing clear to the people that aren't here. I think most of the people here may probably know it, but if you're having a problem or, or if you, you've got something that you're wanting to build and it doesn't fit the code exactly, let's say you're a little close, three feet too close to the property line or, or a height requirement or whatever, the council, you can always come to the council and we can give you a variance. If, if it's for the good of the community and good for, and we feel it's, it's deserving, you always have that option. So, the codes, as, uh, Mark said, it's not set in stone. So, you, as a last resort, or a first resort, you do have that option.
I got one more thing. Go ahead, Tommy. Um, I, I agree with you on, on the lots that already have the, uh, the hookups and everything there. I'm sure there, there may be some lots out there that don't have the hookups. Uh, one of the things that we do need to keep, eh, in mind or take consideration of is that, uh, uh, if we are waiving an impact fee, we need to justify to our taxpayers, what is a return on investment on that? How, where are we gonna see a return on that? Or, uh, a show of hands on how many of us want to use their tax money to subsidize somebody putting a house in an area, uh, that doesn't have this if we're waiving the fees?
And Tommy, I agree that if, if, if there is a structure there, or has been a structure there, but I'm also looking at, you know, how do you tell the impact, okay, we, we got, by more people moving into town? That's one thing. How much they shop in town, we don't know. I mean, I, I agree with you though.
It's kind of what we did with the hotel where, where we waived some fees in order to, in looking at the projection of the revenues.
Yeah, and, uh, but Mark, I think you, you see where, I, and I can't speak for the council, but you see where I'm coming from, I, we've got some nods that we need to be taking a look at those impact fees on the areas that we can reduce them so that we may be able to get some new construction in this community.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, and, uh, and I'll, just, just reminder on the development impact fees, I just, you know, in our department, we just collect whatever happens to be adopted and, and whatever the, uh, you know, the consultant works through. And, and finance actually, you know, in general, has, um, historically managed the development impact fee process. So, it's, it's extremely complex. Um, what I think that I've, I've, I've heard, or at least haven't heard objections to is us looking for, to present an opportunity in the adaptive reuse policy to reduce or potentially even eliminate, um, a single-family scenario where it's on an infill lot. The lot is developed, the infrastructure is there. Uh, to potentially look at the scenario of reducing or eliminating the development impact fee in that, in that scenario. Um, maybe perhaps to look at a reduction of the development impact fee on a commercial or non-residential development where the lot is there, the infrastructure is there, the roads are there, et cetera. To look, to look at potentially a slight offset there that might encourage some non-residential development in the downtown as, as well. But, you know, parts of that infill incentive, um, area are, you know, areas that are still virgin, virgin land. And, uh, you know, we believe that in those situations, they should pay whatever the fees happen, happen to be because those lots have been sitting there ready for, you know, ripe for development for, for years and years and years. And then on top of that, when we present this back, we'll work with the finance department to look at, uh, potentially what the, uh, the impact, um, the impact of changing the impact fees, uh, um, would, would be. And then the other, um, couple of other caveats. One is, you know, in the Florence Gardens area, that, that does go beyond the boundary of what we could do under the infill incentive district. Um, but as I said, with doing this and with the potential adoption of one or two of those annexations, we're gonna have to open the books again and change the, um, and, and redo the impact fee study. And that will give an opportunity to look at, um, in, development impact fees again across the board, whether it's Florence Gardens or downtown, uh, Magic Ranch or, or Anthem or wherever. So, we do have that opportunity in the not-too-distant future as well.
Okay, before we go into the sign, the signs, anything else before the sign? We're gonna take about a five-minute break before the signs. Call the meeting back to order. Time for the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance following. If there are, please write. Charles?
Mr. Mayor, were you gonna go ahead and do the sign code portion?
Oh, yeah, that's right, we need to do that. Let's go ahead, Mark, go ahead with the sign.
Well, Mayor, Mayor and Council, um, I, I think I actually inherently got a lot of direction as we were, as we were doing this. I think I've, um, pretty clear direction, um, to look for opportunities to condense the code, to streamline the code, to make it, uh, more user-friendly and readable. And then also, uh, as I told you at the last work session, um, uh, had, had folks look at it like the International Arizona Sign Associations, and they gave me some critical comment on it because they work with sign codes across the country. And I think there's some opportunities to update some of the language regarding the, um, the area of signs or the height of the signs or, or, um, elect, uh, new provisions for electronic, uh, electronic signs. We also have to do some updates on political signs, uh, as those statutes have changed over, over. over, over time. But I think for the most part, look for the opportunity to, to improve upon the code. Um, and then we'll, we'll put some things together and then present it to the Historic District Advisory Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission and to have that discussion there and work together to formulate a final, um, a final model code that we can present to you for more, for more discussion. But I think we have our, our, our enough direction to start working on that and then go into those boards and commissions and, and, uh, fine-tuning that.
Does anybody from Planning and Zoning Commission have any questions they want to ask from Mark? Make any comments? Anybody from the Historical Advisory Committee at this time? Lynn, please.
Uh, Lynn Smith, I, I don't want to see in the Historic District electronic message signs.
Lynn, can I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
I grew up here, born forty-six, lived here during the fifties and sixties, or I've lived here all my life. When I grew up, and the majority of people my age can remember it, Main Street was lit up. We had...
I don't mind, excuse me, I don't mind neon. We already have it. I'm talking about the electronic.
The digital.
The digital electronic.
The digital?
Yes. I don't think you had that in nineteen forty-two.
It all depends on how much, how, how, how you stumbled out of the oak room, if it was digital or not.
That's possible.
Uh, the digital, I, I might be able to, to go along with you on that, but the neon and everything, I think that neon was something we grew up with.
We already do.
And it, uh, some of the designs on it, like the treasure chest and stuff like that were beautiful. I mean, people came around to look at them besides to go into the store, but, uh, it, we need to really take a look at the neon portions of that sign code and how it can comply with the, uh, the historical, uh, district. I don't want to see any, you know, like the diving girl, we never had any of those things there, but I don't, I don't think we ought to have any signs that were just really blatantly ugly. If they're nice signs, I don't see anything wrong with them myself. But I, I agree with the digital, I'd go along with that. Chris?
Um, Chris Reed on the commission. The A-frames and banners, that, that's been a bone of contention as well because, you know, other towns have, permit A-frames, but they usually have setbacks for their businesses, whereas Florence's, most of Main Street's buildings in the Historic District are built right on the property line and then you've got your sidewalk and that's it. So, when you start putting A-frames on there, you're really crowding that sidewalk for pedestrian traffic. And I understand people's wanting to have them, but I think that really has to be examined carefully. And banners, banners are great if they're actually monitored. I mean, we've had banners that stay up for six months or more and then are fluttering, you know, fluttering around, you know, all tattered and everything else. I mean, the, that and those temporary like beer signs and things like that, that's, that's really got to be, um, better controlled.
There, there has to be something, but it's also, we have to keep in mind merchants that are advertising like that are trying to get people to come into their building and, and the sales tax collected by them, uh, generate a lot of money to this community. Uh, Coolidge is going through it right now. Uh, they're over there, they've really got a problem over there. The A-frames, I, I would leave that up to the merchants. If the merchants had a problem with it, I would have, uh, you know, if, uh, they need to come and make their wishes known on A-frames to us, the council or the staff, uh, again, advertising to get people in the store, whether they, the, you know, an A-frame sign is there for people driving down the street and they may be able to see it, they may be able not due to the fact of parked cars there or whatever. But if you're walking the streets, you can actually see a sign coming up without having to step out in the road and look at what building you're coming to. But again, I, I would like to see the merchants have some input into that, into that sign. I think it should all be in, uh, they should also be included in when we're talking about these signs.
Well, the beer signs and things, I mean, I understand specials you want it, but it just seems like there's no limit. It's just I put one up, then I'll put another one up and I'll put three more and then we'll have six beer signs in the Historic District, like with the drugstore and the, you know, that, that was just, um, it really wasn't.
We, we'll need to take a look at that, especially if it ever reopens again.
Well, or even any of the other stores with, with those tempor, any kind of temporary sign there, it should be at least a, a, a maximum of how many.
I think we do have that in our code at this time. There is a time limit, maybe it hasn't been enforced and that's what...
Hasn't been enforced at all.
Hasn't been enforced.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any member of the council have anything that they'd like to say on the signs? Okay, I guess that's going to conclude the work session. And we'll go into the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. Everybody rise to the invocation. Mary May standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. Please bless our agenda that's before us this evening and allow us to serve the people as well as we possibly can this evening under your guidance. May we always be mindful of service? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the first call to the public for comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. So, rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any manner during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Mary, do you have any sign-up sheets? There are no sign-up sheets, so if there's any member of the council would like to come or the public that wants to speak to the council, please come to the podium, state your name and where are you from? I forgot to thank the Historical District Advisory and the Planning and Zoning Commission for showing up tonight. That was really nice of them. Denise?
Denise Colart, Florence Gardens. I have a real positive thing tonight. I went to a program at the library Friday evening. The friends of the library provided it, the library people picked the program out, but the friends brought them. It was a, a couple of fellows doing Poe, they did a couple of poems and then one of his long stories and they were fantastic. I'm sorry you all missed it, but it was really good. It's one of the really neat things that our library does by putting these shows on and I really, really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Peter Caloris, mount at this restaurant, four-four-four North Canal Parkway. I just wanted to thank you guys for taking a look at the sign code laws. I agree we need to simplify it and just keep one thing in mind when you're looking at it, make sure it's fair. For example, right now, you were talking about the size of Chevron poles, like forty feet. Technically, that's not allowed. LB sign on top of the roof, technically, that's not allowed. Make sure we could all promote our businesses the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any other member of the public? Seeing no movement, hearing no comment, I close call to the public. Need a motion, please?
Make a motion. We adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Board Number One.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Charles?
Item seven A. Ordinance number MRCFD one-one-eleven dash fourteen. First reading of an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Pinellas County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Community Facilities District subject to certain taxation of certain sum upon one, each one hundred dollars of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from the funds for the community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the thirtieth day of June two thousand fifteen. Mr. Farina will present.
Good evening, board members. This is the first reading of the ordinance to levy the secondary property tax for the district. Uh, there is no change in the rate, as has been the case since the district was formed. The total levy rate is three dollars and fifty-five cents per one hundred dollars of net assessed valuation, which consists of three dollars and twenty-five cents for the repayment of GO bonds issued to finance the costs of public and infrastructure improvements within the district. Uh, the other thirty cents is to maintain or fund maintenance of public improvements as well as, as well as administrative costs to the district, to operate the district. The three dollar and twenty-five cent tax rate levy will generate an estimated five-hundred and four thousand nine hundred dollars for debt service and the thirty cent tax levy will generate forty-six thousand six hundred for operations and maintenance for a total levy of five-hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars in property tax revenue. The second reading and public hearing is on July seventh and then the adoption of the ordinance will be on July twenty-first. Adam, I'll be here for questions.
Any member of the council have any question to answer, ask Mike? This is a public hearing?
No.
No, just a reading?
First reading only.
First reading only. Okay, we have no other, we don't need to do anything then on that.
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District.
Second. We have a motion and a second to, to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Board Number One. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Board.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Nine A. Ordinance number MRCFD two-two-ten dash fourteen. First reading of an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Pinellas County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Community Facilities District subject to taxation of certain sum upon each one hundred dollars of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from the funds for community facilities expenses for fiscal year ending the thirtieth day of June two thousand fifteen. Mr. Farina will present.
Good evening, board members again. Uh, this is the first reading of the ordinance to levy the secondary property tax for District Number Two. Uh, again, there is no change in this rate as, as has been the case since the district was formed. The total rate is three dollars and fifty-five cents per one hundred dollars of net assessed valuation. Um, the, and it's made up of the same components as, as in the first district. Uh, the three dollar and twenty-five cent tax levy will generate an estimated four-hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred for debt service and the thirty cent tax levy will generate forty-four thousand dollars for operations and maintenance for a total of five-hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred in property tax revenue. Again, this is, uh, the first reading. The second reading and public hearing is on July seventh and adoption of the ordinance is on July twenty-first.
Any member of the council have any question for Mike? Hearing none, thank you, Mike. Charles?
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Board.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item eleven, public hearing and presentations. A, presentation of the two thousand fourteen Arizona Governor's Heritage Preservation Award for the Chapel of the Hila to the Assumption of the Blessed Virgin Mary Parish. And I believe Ms. Bonnie Bariola will be presenting.
Since nineteen eighty-two, the Arizona Preservation Foundation and Arizona State Historic Preservation Office have partnered to present the Governor's Heritage Preservation Honor Awards. Since two thousand three, these awards have been the highlight of the annual Historic Preservation Conference. This year's conference, held at the Espunda Resort in Rio Rico and hosted by the City of Nogales, ended on Saturday. Florence was well represented at the conference in both attendance and sessions. Conference partners were especially appreciative of the fact that Florence's Vice Mayor Smith and Councilmember Selaya attended. Vice Mayor Smith was the only mayor or vice mayor in attendance at the conference. Thank you also for supporting attendance by the HDAC members and their staff liaison. Quoting from the person who coordinates the conference, he said, "I would definitely say that Florence was well represented at the conference, having sent so many of the town's team, including the vice mayor." That's kind of a big coup for the conference. "I hope they continue to see it as a worthwhile event that merits their investment and participation." One session presented by architects Stephanie Rowe, Lindsay Wood-Mancy and myself showcased Florence's True Value Hardware entitled, "Building and Business Preservation in a Historic Downtown Area." Additional rehabilitated buildings in Florence were also included. "We were extremely pleased that the room was packed." A second session promoting Florence gave examples of projects that included buildings that through adaptive reuse for commercial purposes also benefit heritage tourism. Examples include the Silver King Hotel Marketplace, True Value Hardware and the Second Pinellas County Courthouse. Now, back to the award. In about nineteen ninety, Andy Ramirez came to the Historic District Advisory Commission asking if they were in support of rehabilitating the Chapel of the Hila with the answer being a resounding yes. As a result of a voter initiative, the Heritage Fund was established and in nineteen ninety-one, a grant prepared and sponsored by the Town of Florence with matching funds provided by the Diocese, the rehabilitation of the Chapel of the Hila began and by the summer of two thousand, weekday masses were being held at the chapel. Additional work continued in two thousand two. Unfortunately, due to extreme weather conditions and drainage problems, it was necessary to make massive repairs again in two thousand twelve funded by the parish. Additional rehabilitation has been done to the entire complex in the past two years with every room in the complex having a viable use today. The Governor's Heritage Preservation Honor Awards recognize people, organizations and projects that represent outstanding achievements in preserving Arizona's prehistoric and historic resources. The award recipients are selected from nominations submitted from all over the state of Arizona. One of the nine winners for two thousand fourteen was the Assumption of the Virgin Mary Parish for the rehabilitation of the Hila complex, for the Chapel of the Hila complex with a nomination prepared and submitted by the Florence Preservation Foundation. Mayor Rankin will now come present this award to Doty and Wilbur Freeman on behalf of the parish.
Doty and Wilbur, on behalf of the Town Council and myself, I'd like to present this Governor's Heritage Preservation Honor Award to you for the church. I think that, uh, it's a, something to go by there and think of all the times we used to play around there as kids, all of us did. Yes, you did. You weren't in church all the time, sometimes you shouldn't have been. But it's, it's really a neat addition to Florence now that it's fixed. Uh, but this award is presented in the business organization projects that represent outstanding achievement in preserving Arizona's historic preservation culture resources. Again, on behalf of the town and the Town Council, please accept this, take it to your brother, uh, Andy, or JP. Uh, Andy had a lot to do with getting that started and, uh, I wished he was here tonight, but he couldn't be with us tonight. So, I'll give it to his sister and his brother-in-law and, uh, I know it, and, uh, tell the father that we're happy for him. Every member of the community has been by there one time at least and know the work and the, still you're doing work on it and that's what, keep it there. Okay, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Presentation by the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, recognizing the business of the month.
George Koloris, his wife Joanna, and their son Peter opened Mount Athos Greek Restaurant on January 17th, 2005. Since George's passing a few years ago, Peter has taken over as the owner and operator. His mother still continues to cook lamb shanks, meatloaf, meatballs, and other recipes. Peter runs a restaurant that is popular with the locals and draws lots of out-of-towners. He is also active in the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce as Vice Chairman of the Board. He has two sisters who live in Chandler, one of them Patty, worked in the restaurant until she began volunteering at her children's school. The restaurant plans to begin offering a delivery menu in July, and they're already thinking about how they might celebrate their 10th anniversary in January. It is my honor to present the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, July 2015, Business of the Month, to Mount Athos Restaurant.
I already spoke to the public, I guess, but thank you very much, I'm honored, and I'm honored to be a member of the community. I can't believe it's been 10 years since we've opened our doors, coming up in January. So we're looking to organize a fun little event this year, and have a good time, hopefully, and I'm expecting everyone to be there, and we'll celebrate together. Thank you very much, guys.
Peter, your dad's proud of you.
Proclamation declaring July 2014 as Park and Recreation Month in the Town of Florence, Arizona. Proclamation, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the Town of Florence, Arizona, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers for development, and produce a habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for our children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Florence, Arizona recognizes the benefits derived from the parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, I, Tom Rankin, do hereby proclaim July recognizes Parks and Recreation Month in Florence, Arizona.
Brian, on behalf of the town council myself, I'd like to present you this proclamation. It's not as nice as the one Doty got, but it means just as much. You know, recreation has always been a big issue here in Florence. Our children, you've got the park open down on South Main Street, we've got the new area being cleared of land at this time, we're going somewhere finally, but getting out, if the people do get out in the summertime, make sure they stay well hydrated, you gotta make sure you get all that out, and safety around the swimming pools is a big issue. Everybody that has recreational pools in their backyard need to really be careful with the kids, and we know that you and our recreation department are doing a good job as far as promoting that, and we want you to continue doing it, continue with all the programs you're doing.
We will.
We're not going to give you any more money, but keep doing it. Brian, again, on behalf of the town council myself, thank you very much for the job you're doing. Brand-new director in town, already getting these awards. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item twelve, consent. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A. Resolution Number 1447 dash 14. Adoption of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the service agreement between Smart Works Plus Incorporated and the Town of Florence effective July 1st, 2014, for a four-year term. B. Approval to hire Felix Construction to make repairs at the North Florence Wastewater Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-seven thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifteen cents. C. Approval to hire Felix Construction to make repairs at the South Florence Wastewater Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand twenty-two dollars. Mayor, council, that is your consent agenda.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Does any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Hearing no motion, I need a motion, please. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item thirteen, new business. A. Ordinance Number 611 dash 14. Discussion, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting a local alternative expenditure limitation for the town for the fiscal year 2014, 2015, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Farina will present.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This is an emergency ordinance to adopt the town's expenditure limitation for the fiscal year 2014, 2015. The expenditure limitation proposed for 2014-15 is sixty-six million eight hundred and six thousand for the 2014-15 fiscal year, and is based on the tentative budget, which is also before you tonight. The figure, the sixty-six million eight hundred and six thousand includes all of the expenditures presented to you during several work sessions over the course of the past several months. It also includes ten million five hundred and eight thousand in funds carried forward from the 2013-14 budget to complete projects that were started in 2013-14. The adoption of this expenditure limitation sets the maximum limit that can be spent in the fiscal year, and once it's adopted, budgeted expenditures can only be decreased.
Any member of the council have any questions, Mike or Charles? Hearing none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 611 dash 14, the adoption of the expenditure limitation in the amount of sixty-six million eight hundred and six thousand dollars for fiscal year 2014, 2015, and declaring an emergency.
Second. We have a motion in the second to adopt ordinance 611 dash 14, adopting an expenditure limitation in the amount of sixty-six million eight hundred and six thousand dollars for fiscal year 2014 through 2015, declaring an emergency. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item thirteen B. First reading of an ordinance Number 612 dash 14, an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Town of Florence, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each one hundred dollars of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for the general and municipal expenses for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2015. Mr. Farina will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. This is the first reading of the ordinance to levy the primary property tax for the town. As was mentioned in budget work session, there is no increase in the property tax rate. The rate approved for 2013-14 was one dollar point one one eight two per one hundred dollars of net assessed valuation, and that will remain the same for 2014-15. Although there is no increase in the property tax rate, a truth and taxation hearing is required by state statute, because the amount of taxes levied from that rate is greater than the prior year taxes levied last year. This increase is due to an increase in the overall net assessed valuation of the town, however, it's not because of an increase in the property tax rate. The Property Tax Oversight Commission of the Arizona Department of Revenue calculates a maximum levy amount based on last year's levy, and taking into account new construction within the town. This year, 2013-14, the dollar point one one eight two rate generated a property tax levy of eight hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars. With new construction added to that, the maximum levy for next year is eight hundred and forty thousand and seventy-six dollars. That's the maximum levy for the truth and taxation hearing. But because of the town's increased in net assessed valuation, not increasing the property tax rate for next year will still generate eight hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and forty property tax levy compared to the eight hundred and forty thousand I just mentioned, and that's a twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-four, or a one and a half percent increase in the property tax levy, again, not the rate. So again, because of the increase in the levy amount, a truth and taxation hearing is required, and also in addition, this ordinance includes levies for the streetlight improvement districts. The ordinance sets those rates at zero dollars, just like last year, they were also set at zero because there's adequate fund balance in those districts to fund the operations for the next year. Second reading and the truth and taxation public hearing is on July 7th, and then adoption of the ordinance will be on July 21st. So this was first reading.
Any member of the council have any questions, Mike? Okay, thank you, Mike.
Item thirteen C. Resolution Number 1448 dash 14. Discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the Town of Florence Capital Improvement Project Plan, providing for separability. Mr. Farina will present again.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Approving this resolution will adopt the 2015 through 2019 Capital Improvement Plan. This CIP represents a five-year plan that identifies future capital project needs in anticipation of future growth and provision of services. And this is also an update of the CIP adopted by council last year. Staff evaluated funding sources and needs for the next five years and adjusted the current CIP to ensure projects slated for 2014-15 have available funding. Projects that could not be funded were moved to future years. Staff presented a draft of this 2015-2019 CIP to town council at the April 14th work session, and since then, nothing has been added to the plan that you have before you tonight. The council packet contains a summary of the CIP, and you were given a draft booklet, this is a draft, of the CIP, which has also been provided to you. So then upon your approval tonight, if the case may be, the draft will be finalized and then posted on the town's website and other public locations.
Any member of the council have any question for Mike? Kara?
So when I was reading through this CIP, on page seven, it states that total project costs in the proposed five-year CIP for this area are forty-three million eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Identified funding sources total twenty-five million four hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred, leaving a total of eighteen million four hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred dollars of the planned projects unfunded. In addition, future planning will require identifying other sources of revenue or delaying planned projects into fiscal's years 2016, 17, and 17, 18. So my question is, the eighteen million four hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred dollars, exactly what projects are going unfunded?
Mayor and Council, that is a decision for future council to make. Right now, what we wanted to make sure was done was that we had funding to complete the 2014-15 budget, and also made sure we had enough funding that carried over into 2015-16 for projects that may have started in 2014-15 and continued on into 2015-16. The previous CIPs that were submitted didn't really show it in this manner, however, it showed that the revenues, there was enough revenue to cover the projects, however, those revenues were not based on projections. Those revenues were just based on potential resources to fund those projects, although it showed that the CIP was balanced in those out years, in reality, it wasn't balanced because the revenues that were shown in the CIP last year, they were not based on projections. So what this is showing, it's showing management and council and then the public what reality is in terms of funding, and then what projects, or how much funding is not available for the list of projects that are in the CIP for the five years. So looking at this current CIP, 2015 through 2019, you'll see in most cases that projects are funded, and funding is reasonably known to be there for the early years, the 2014-15 budget, and then the following year, 2015-16. However, there starts to be a gap in identified needs versus revenues, and at that point, there may need to be some discussion to come up with the funding, or again, delay the project out into the future.
Okay, because my concern is, in the previous council meeting, when we were talking about the Library Aquatic Center and that funding, was, is there anything that's going to be detrimental as we're going towards moving with annexations and that type of funding? So that's why I asked the clarifying question.
Councilmember Walters, Mayor, Council, if I may. The projects listed in this capital budget, about ninety-eight percent of them will get completed, they're already funded, there's a few that are not, but if you look at your column on that page seven, 2018, there is approximately seventeen million, you see right there, if you go into the detail, it shows potentially a new town hall project of approximately thirteen million dollars, a new police station of approximately four million dollars, and a new community center of about two-point-two million dollars. Those are projects that the previous council had recommended to occur in those fiscal years, however, staff will be coming up with new recommendations for you all and pushing those projects out, as this project moves forward out to the east-west of us.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I just also wanted that clarified for anybody who reads this for themselves.
Any other question? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1448 dash 14, which is the adoption of the CIP budget, effective July 1st, 2014.
Second. We have a motion in the second to adopt Resolution 1448 dash 14, effective July 1st, 2014. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item thirteen D. Resolution Number 1449 dash 14. Discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimates of the amount required for the public expense for the Town of Florence fiscal year 2014, 2015, adopting a tentative annual budget, setting forth the receipts expenditures and the amount proposed to be expended for various purposes, giving notice to the time for public hearing for taxpayers on the adoption of the final budget, adopting the budget in accordance with the local expenditure limitation ordinance, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Farina will present.
Okay, so last but not least, you have before your resolution, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2014, and ending on June 30th, 2015. An initial draft of the budget was presented to council at a work session on April 14th, 2014. During that meeting, the town manager made a presentation on the recommended budget in which the goals and the items in the budget were highlighted. In addition, highlights of the 2013-14 current year were highlighted as well. The tentative budget you have before you tonight contains several changes made since the draft budget was passed out on April 14th, and added to at a second work session on April 23rd. Each of these changes, though, have been discussed with council at a later work session or during a council meeting, and the changes are as follows. A mid-year one percent general compensation adjustment totaling fifty-six thousand five hundred. A library aquatics and recreation facility project, which is to be determined by town council in the future, totaling thirteen million, plus two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for project management. In addition, five hundred thousand dollars was added back to the Clomar-Lomar budget, based on, and that is coming from the CIP that was adopted for 2013-14, to cover the cost of dirt work for the proposed new facility. Also, one hundred thousand dollars was added for a public arts program. And again, all of these changes have already been discussed with council, they're just added to the budgets that were already handed out to you on April 14th and April 23rd. In addition, the tentative budget also added was, to the tentative budget, was the ten million five hundred and eight thousand in funds carried forward from the 2013-14 budget to complete capital projects that were started in that year. So I'd like to give a little bit more about the budget and what's in here. You received a couple of documents- You received a couple of documents for the 2014-15 budget. One of them is a detail of the budget, presents the line item detail for each cost or revenue in the budget. And then just tonight, we handed out a draft of the annual budget document. It contains more of a summarized version of each department, highlights the accomplishments, highlights the goals for 2014-15. There's a budget message in there that kind of discusses the highlights of the budget as well as the document itself. So again, it's in draft form. The final budget adoption does not occur until July 7th. Tonight, we're adopting a tentative budget to allow us to move forward into the year beginning July 1st. So some of the things regarding this budget, I'd like to just take out of the budget message and say that, again, the total 2014-15 budget for the town is sixty-six million, eight hundred and six thousand, and that includes the ten million dollars, or ten million, five hundred and eight thousand carried forward from 2013-14. Excluding that amount carried forward, the 2014-15 budget is fifty-six million, two-hundred and ninety-eight thousand, which is eight million, eight hundred thousand greater than the 2013-14 budget. And the primary reason for that increase in the budget is due to a difference in capital projects, and that can be easily seen in the capital projects fund where capital projects are being completed in the capital project fund, but also in the utilities budgets as well as the HERF fund. So with that, the total of all town fund balances at the beginning of the year is fifty-nine million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred. That's projected based on the current year, which also I'd like to point out that, as you may recall in the financial reports, the quarterly financial reports, town is doing well. Revenues are either meeting or exceeding projections, and it's going to be substantial going over the expected revenues, as was presented in those financial reports. So the town's doing very well financially. The town's in very good financial health. So the projected total ending fund balance coming down from the fifty-nine point four million, the total ending fund balance is twenty-eight million, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, two hundred. Now, that's the total for all funds, including the general fund, the utility services funds, and all of the other funds. And that represents a drawdown of fund balance of about thirty-one point two million. However, you know, I just want to let you know that that is a planned drawdown, and that's coming from a relatively high beginning fund balance. And that thirty-one million dollar drawdown is totally due to the capital projects that the town has already started and also is planning for the next fiscal year. We have a total of about forty million dollars in capital projects in this budget, which, again, includes about ten million from carried forward from the prior year. So nevertheless, you know, I want to say the twenty-eight point two million dollar total ending fund balance is still made up of very healthy fund balances, not only in the general fund, which will have an ending fund balance of about seven point two million, or as we said in a previous work session, fifty percent of expenditures, which is, you know, quite higher than what is recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. Typically, they recommend a ten to twenty percent fund balance percentage of expenditures. We're recommending a budget that is fifty percent of, fund balance is fifty percent of the expenditures, or essentially six months of operations. Other town operating funds, the highway user revenue fund and utility funds, they'll also end with very healthy fund balance as represented by their fund balance as a percentage of expenditure ratios. So with that, that concludes my presentation for the tentative budget. This is also by emergency ordinance. The tentative budget is, it's actually put on auditor general's forms. We're required to put the budget on auditor forms prescribed by the auditor general, and the documents that you have supplement the official budget of the town, which, again, is by those schedules by the auditor general. There will be a public hearing and adoption of the final budget on July 7th.
Any member of the council have any question?
I do. I have several questions, actually. My first question is on page thirty-nine, when we're regarding legal services. Is there any area that states how much money the town has invested or put aside in contracting with outside legal counsel?
That's a number that I could obtain and provide to town council. I don't have it off the top of my head. I know that, I think there's a budget, purchase services is about eight thousand, one hundred for outside services.
Councilmember Walters, mayor and council, if I may. The cost for outside legal counsel, really, it's not all contained within the attorney's budget. It does occur and is shown in other places in the budget, and it may be simpler if we provide you a memo or document explaining exactly where it is and what those costs are, if that's okay with council.
That would be great. Thank you. My second question was on page forty-three, and where it states significant budget changes at the bottom, it says one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred added to salaries and benefits for hiring a human resource director as employee. And then below it, it says ninety-five thousand, two hundred reduced contractual services with hiring a human resource director as employee. Can you explain the thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollar increase?
Absolutely. Councilmember Walters, mayor and council. What occurred there, if you may recall, Mr. Barber, our human resources director, was on contract with us through Smart Works program, so he was on contract with us. In that contract, basically, we pay a net sum or a sum to Smart Works, and they then employ Mr. Barber to work with the town. Since the town did bring him on, the town then needs to pick up the salary, the benefits that were not paid, and all the taxes and social security associated with that. So that's the difference.
This is more benefit package that caused the increase.
I'm sorry?
This is more the benefit package that caused the increase.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. The next question was on page eighty-seven. And it was more of a brief question of, have we researched grants to help supplement with, I see the library is listed, the library state grants in aid, but as well as the aquatic center? Is there any grants that are available, and have we applied for them?
Councilmember Walters, council. We are looking at all grants. Specifically, we have not looked for aquatic center grants right now, but we've been going down the road, looking at the public safety grants and any other type of grant we can get, and that is in the realm of what we'll be looking at. The finance department has been looking at everything we can possibly get.
Okay. The next question is on page ninety-nine. And I was wondering, why are we carrying such a high fund balance when it comes to the street light improvement districts? Because it's in the description, it says the street light improvement districts account for the receipt of ad valorem property taxes that are collected for the purpose of paying for cost of electricity usage, and consistently, it's been about twenty-six thousand a year, but we have maintained, you know, about half a million dollars in there for a balance.
Councilmember Walter, mayor and council, that fund balance has been in the street light improvement districts from previous property tax levies. As you may recall, last year, a zero was adopted because there is adequate fund balance in those funds to sustain the operations for this current year as well as the following year. I'm not sure the years before that, you know, what drove the increase compared to expenditures. However, I know going forwards, maybe last year, maybe the year before even then, we're adopting a zero levy because there is adequate fund balance, and I don't anticipate that there would be a levy until those districts need the funds to operate.
Okay. And the next question, I only have two more, so thank you for your patience, is on one hundred and fifty-three. And actually, these partner up together because it's just the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District one and two for the operations and maintenance funds. In the expenditures, there's salary and benefits of twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars for each of those. Which salaries and benefits specifically?
That is the grants and assessments manager. That would be our Ernie Feliz, who was hired a couple of years ago to assist the finance department with managing these, the financial end of the two facilities districts. So part of his salary is allocated, salary and benefits is allocated to each of these districts.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying those. That's all I had.
Any other question?
I just, it's nothing major, but I was going through the details on the budget. On page one thirty-one of the detail brochure, fire station two, is that the new, that's the new fire station?
Fire station number two is the new fire station.
Well, it says we're going to put in new windows?
That's a misprint. It should say fire station number one.
Okay. Because I was going to say, we just finished it. I was, it's nothing major, I was just...
No, that's a good point.
Okay. All right.
It should say fire station number one.
Thank you.
Mike, what is going to be the anticipated carryover for, at the end of the fiscal year? What would be our fund balance then after this budget's adopted? General fund only?
Carried forward into the new year from this year?
Yeah.
Fifteen, the total across all funds is fifty-nine million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred. If you're just referring to the general fund, the carry forward for next year's fund balance is seven point six million.
Okay. Do you have an anticipated at the end of fourteen, fifteen?
We're projecting that to end at seven million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, which, again, is the number that was fifty percent of the expenditures, representing about six months of operations in reserve.
In HERF money? Same thing?
In the HERF budget, let me turn to that real quick. The beginning projected fund balance, or the fund balance for this ending, ending this year, is projected at about six point four million, and the ending fund balance is three-hundred and forty-three thousand, the difference there being six million. However, that is a drawdown because of capital projects. One thing in that fund is, as I mentioned, you want to measure the health of the particular fund, you want to look at fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. And in this case, we made sure that, we still wanted to accomplish certain capital projects, but we still wanted to make sure we had a healthy enough fund balance to carry forward through the year. So the three-hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred ending fund balance represents sixteen percent of expenditures, which is still within guidelines for, or best practices promoted by General, or Government Finance Officers Association. In other words, it's still a healthy fund balance.
Where is HERF?
It's page eighty-four of the summary budget, not the detail one.
And mayor, if I may, council, in regard to the HERF funds, you all may recall that the state pretty much took a lot of the taxability away from the towns and cities across the state of Arizona. So the reimbursement to this fund has not been what it has been, what it should have been about five years ago before that occurred. In addition, the projects in the HERF fund, the staff did not recommend any new projects. These are projects that were previously approved by council. So we're just carrying those projects forward and trying to complete those.
So what we're going to do is we're going to spend all the money this year, or the majority of the money in that account, leaving a fund balance somewhere around three-hundred thousand?
Correct.
That's cutting it pretty slim.
Mayor and council, I do agree with you that it's cutting slim. These are projects that were already in place and in process and engineered and approved by council. So we did not modify the HERF fund, and as you may recall, I believe the state was increasing the funding back to the towns this coming year on HERF slightly, not to the extent that we wished. But we also did make sure that in the general fund, instead of adding additional costs to the HERF fund, we looked at trying to do maintenance out of the capital budget instead of the HERF because the funds were not available. And as you may know, there are several roads in the downtown area, in the core area of Florence that need to be, have maintenance done to them. So we're being very careful on what we do with this fund.
I guess what my concern is, I know that thirty million dollars is added to the whole state budget by the state legislature this year for HERF, but you're spreading that out over fifteen counties and ninety-four-some municipalities. So it's not going to be a big increase, thirty million it sounds like. Cutting the, I know these projects we've got slated on the board are important, need to get done, but I think we need to be very careful about the amount of HERF money that's coming into us this next fiscal year, because I don't see a big increase, especially with the, with everything that's going on as far as the lesser gas tax being generated by the electric cars, by your high mileage vehicles. I'm just, I'm really worried, I think we need to keep a close eye on that HERF money. Because if we get in a position that, what I'm afraid of is cutting our general fund money and HERF money down to three-hundred thousand, that's not even half a million. If some major thing happens that we need to get in there and take care of, you know, we're going to have to beg, borrow from other departments or other funds to get it done.
Mayor and council, if I may, if you look on page eighty-six, the prior page on there, there's one point nine million dollars set aside for Florence Heights Improvement Main to Seventy-Nine. That is not going to occur. The Public Works Department already did a temporary cleanup of that road for the next three years, and there'll be no repairs to that road made until ADOT finishes both Seventy-Nine Seventy-Nine B and Seventy-Nine Two Eighty-Seven. So there's another one point nine million dollars that will not be used.
Wayne, on the input from ADOT, when are you looking at being able to do the Florence Heights improvement with the roundabouts?
We basically anticipate that, that decision from ADOT in conjunction with our engineering about the second quarter of, at the end of first quarter of 2015. In addition to that, we need to resolve the SCID issue also because that interplays with the intersection at Pinnell Parkway, State Road Seventy-Nine, and Florence Heights also.
And we do have the signalization for diversion dam road and Seventy-Nine and First Street?
Yes, that's correct. Diversion Dam, we made a design change. I anticipate picking up between four and five hundred thousand from that total project cost. We deleted many of the medians in that area.
The one thing, if we can save some money in there someplace, I would love to see something done about getting a light at Addaway Road and Hunt Highway. If it has to be a temporary light or whatever, that is one of the most dangerous intersections, along with Kelvin Highway and Seventy-Nine. That Hunt Highway and Addaway Road carries bukus of traffic. You've got the canals there, I'm aware of, but we still have to have light at there. You can't see it at night. It's horrible. Wayne, do you have anything in the planned budget for this year to get lighting in there?
We have, within the line item two fourteen, which is traffic operations, we have some solar traffic control plans for that intersection at Addaway and Hunt.
That, it's horrible. That's the same thing as Kelvin Road and Seventy-Nine where that curve comes around. I think we need better signalization out there, lighting out there anyway, also. Just my concerns on that, okay?
Okay.
Any other question? And how much is jail going to cost us this year, Ruben? Oh, I mean, a lot. What are we allocating in the police department budget for incarceration?
I'm going to have to re, actually, Mike, do you know that answer offhand? I don't have Mr. Hughes here, and I'm not sure Mr. Troyon knows offhand, and I don't recall that, mayor, but I can get you that answer.
Mayor, if I could, mayor, it's actually, I believe that's placed in the court's budget.
It is in the court's budget, and I'm looking right now to see if I can pinpoint it real I believe it's the line item for professional services, which is eleven thousand, five hundred dollars.
I'm looking here under municipal court, it said jail housing funds, twenty-one thousand on page thirty-eight.
That's revenue, sir, that we receive from fines and those types.
What?
From fines.
That's another question I have. You're showing here receipts for fines. How much money are we actually getting, and how much do we have on the books, do you know?
Mayor, if you look at that same page thirty-eight, if you look at the court fines and fees, the 2012-13, we actually received one hundred and fifty-one thousand. thousand. And we were estimating that this year we would get about one hundred and sixty thousand. So we're still there. And we're going up slightly for the next year's budget, about another eight thousand. So we did receive one hundred and fifty-one thousand in the latest fiscal year.
That's what we, we received, or is that what we find?
That is what we received. And so I do not know the answer to your question, what the difference is between what we received and what we find. But I can find out for you.
Because I, I think that we probably have a lot of payment processes going on. And now, do we have a collect, collection agency on that, working on those uncollected fines?
I believe we do. Yes, sir.
Jim?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Mayor, I believe that the court's jail fee budget is listed under the line item of other. If you look at the municipal court budget page, I have different page numbers than what you have up there. But if you look, if you can turn to the page for the municipal court, it, I believe it's listed under other. And if you'll see, it's currently sitting at seventy thousand. That is my recollection of what the court was budgeted to allow it to incarcerate people that have been convicted in the county jail.
Seventy thousand?
Yes, I believe so.
It's based on the municipality rate that the county charges. So what you're looking at is your cost per day, once they get in there. I think there's a set price for the amount they go in when they're booked in for processing fee. And then there's a fee that, that's a per, per day fee.
The first, the first day that you detain somebody at the Pinnell County Adult Detention Center, it's a hundred and ninety-three dollars, I believe, something in that area. And then every subsequent day after that is about half that.
Seventy-five bucks, eighty dollars, right around there, per day.
Yes.
Is there any programs that we can develop to get away from incarceration?
Well, we did, mayor. If you recall, a few years back, we did institute an electric, electronic monitoring program for the court. And so that has been utilized quite a bit, I believe, by the court to allow for the home detention of people that have been convicted of drunk driving, for the most part, where there's a mandatory jail sentence involved. And most of the people that are offered that accepted because it is less expensive to them. And it also alleviates us from having to send them to the county.
I think what a lot of the issue comes into play is any felonies, that there's arrests here in the city limits, as well as those that are afraid to appear, afraid to pay their fine, that you're looking at incarceration on the arrest with the warrant. They usually get out right away and then they, the band, they put around the ankle, or the ankle bracelet is applied. And they usually, they use it quite a bit here in Florence.
And I, and the reason I'm questioning, Ruben, I'll be very honest with you, I think it's an unfair tax that the county charges us to lock people up. We, as county citizens, pay our property taxes. And I don't think that the county should be charging municipalities extra, which they're doing, countywide, not just Florence. And this has been a discussion I've had going on for years before you even started there, back when I was chief of police. I, I think it's an unfair charge that the county charges municipalities. I will always continue to state that, because we're, and on felonies, I don't think that we have to pay for felony once they're indicted. I think that after they're indicted, they, they, even if we arrest them, we're not being, or not charging. But to me, it is a very unfair tax to municipalities, because we're already paying the taxes. The citizens are already paying the taxes. Now they're paying them again to us to pay that fee. That's just my only question on that.
I understand that. But at times when you, we create ordinances for drunken public or walking main street, urinating in public, and there's an ordinance in place that we create, and then all of a sudden, there's an arrest based on that, we created that ordinance, and then we caused the arrest to occur, the county shouldn't have to pick up the bill for that.
I, I agree with that. I agree with that. But on state statutes, whether it be misdemeanor or felony charges, I don't think that, that the town should have to pay for that if it's a state statute. That's, that's just my opinion, in which I think a lot of people around the county have the same idea that live in corporate city limits, as far as the double taxation. Okay. Anything else in the budget? Okay, we need a motion?
Based on a tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, I make a motion, adopt resolution number four four nine.
Second?
Again, mayor, council, this is an emergency ordinance. I don't know if that needs to be said or not.
It's as an ordinance, as an emergency ordinance, yes.
And declaring emergency, is that your motion, Ruben?
Yes.
That's what I thought. We have a motion to adopt resolution eleven, or fourteen forty-nine dash fourteen, declare an emergency. Any other discussion? Hearing and I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now all we can do is reduce it. We can't increase it, right?
Correct. Mayor, I have a fourteen manager report. I don't have anything. I do want to definitely thank Mr. Farina and his staff. The documents you have before you is an entirely new format, developed primarily by Mike, to let the community know and make it easier for them to see what's in the budget, and let them know what's going on and where things are at and who to talk to. So I definitely want to tell them thank you for that, so.
And these are available at the clerk's office for public view?
Yes, sir.
Or online? Are they online also?
They will be online.
Thank you. Call the public is the second call to the public for public wishing to make comments. Please, Ruth.
Ruth Harrison, Florence, Arizona. One of the staff members, I believe, at one of the previous meetings talked about the new library aquatic center with offices and so forth, being a regional center. And somehow, I think I'd like the town, to focus on it being for the town rather than necessarily for the region. I'd just like to say that, and for what it's worth. And also, the public arts program, the one hundred thousand dollar public arts program that, that you all are proposing, if I remember correctly, that was just for art, physical art things, and not for public programs, art programs and things like that. And I was hoping that art programs could be included in that as, in addition to just the physical sculptures or paintings or whatever else is going to come, come along. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
And Ruth, I did address the problem. You called me about Friday.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Is anyone else? Hearing and I call, close, call the public, call the council, virus?
I don't have anything.
Bill?
I'd just like to recognize the American Legion for putting up flags at all the different holidays. They get up early in the morning and go out and do that, all down Main Street. And I don't think they get the recognition they need. I just wanted to point that out.
Tom?
I do. I would like to remind everybody that we have our Fourth of July Freedom Festival, Friday, July fourth, at Heritage Park. There is going to be a shuttle service that will be running from the Holiday Inn Express all the way down to Heritage Park. It says from three to eight p.m. I'm wondering if there's a way to get, you know, after the fireworks as well, because the Holiday Inn Express is also offering special rates for those of you that are watching or might read about it in the paper and want to come and visit the town of Florence and stay at night. Thank you.
Ruben?
I know we have another special meeting coming up Wednesday. I won't be here. I'll be attending another function.
Okay. Tom?
I just wanted to thank staff for the great job that they did on putting our budget together. I also wanted to let people know that I didn't have an opportunity to attend the Historic Preservation Conference. We were well represented there. We had several commissioners there. I think a special recognition for Bonnie, for all of her efforts for putting together, you know, she, she put on a, quite a bit of, actually, she had a lot of, man, I can't get the words out of my mouth.
I do, please?
Don't confuse me now. No, she, she took a lot of posters and things that represented the town, a lot of the historic sites. I think the only thing that was missing at the conference were our actual buildings. And I think that the town really needs to do, look into trying to bring that conference to the, to the town of Florence. Because in Rio Rico, there was, there was not really much to see there, other than the conference center. And I've been to a few of these where, in Prescott and some other areas where they have some of the historic sites that you can go out and visit. And I think that if we were able to land something like that here in the town, with, with all of the different buildings that Bonnie had taken to represent of the town, that'd be a really neat opportunity for us to, to get some recognition and, and have some people come down and enjoy all of the beautiful buildings that we've got here. Thank you, Bonnie.
Okay. The only I'd like to do is add to the Chapel of the Gila. Some people know, a lot of people don't. But the Chapel of the Gila is the mother church of the Phoenix Diocese. That's a lot of history in one little church from Florence.
Closing it out, I'd like to send our condolences out to the family of the young boy that was killed on Highway Seventy-Nine this past week. Speed was a factor. He had graduated from high school this year here. He tragically lost his life. And the council and I would like to send out condolences to the family. We have a special workshop Wednesday, reference the, the library and the park and the swimming pool. So if anybody is in the public would like to be here, have input, we're more than welcome to be here. And I'd also like to publicly thank all of those who made contributions to Florence Little League after the, after the theft that occurred there. I, we don't have any idea if it will ever be solved or not, but we're going to put those kids, one way or another, those kids are going to go to All-Star Games. With that, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to second adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Most carry, we adjourn. Thank you.